All right. And I don't know where my gavel went, but in any case, we'll imagine I have a virtual gavel and I'm calling our meeting to order. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask Commissioner Irma Haraghi to lead that for us. Please stand. Okay. Will will the Secretary please call roll?
Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Christie. Commissioner Cornelius.
President.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Haregi.
Yes.
Commissionership. Vice Chair Murashi.
Ed.
Here. Here.
Chair Rush.
Present.
Chair Quorum has been reached at four forty-one.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion. And I guess motion and a second to allow Vice Chair Ed Murashi to participate remotely. And this is due to the fact that he is in Camarillo at a hospital or operations center due to the illness of his wife. And we want to allow him to participate. And while normally he would have to give us notice in advance, so it could be posted. This is an emergency and apparently this is allowed under the the new rules of the Brown Act. So do we?
I move.
Commissioner Christie's made the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Commissioner Cornelius? All right, thank you. So we have a motion and second. Madam Secretary, do you want to call the roll?
Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Christie.
Yes.
Commissioner Cornelius.
Yes.
Commissioner Hardy.
Yes.
Commissioner Haregi.
Yes.
Commissionership. Vice Chair Murashi.
Yes.
Chair Rush.
Yes.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioner Carpenter and Commissionership absent.
Okay, all right. At this time, before we get into our our business, I have something ceremonial to present this evening and I I think it's appropriate that we recognize the service of our former chair. And that would be none other than Alberta Christie, who's also a former council member to term. And Mayor Pro Tem. So we have a gavel here.
Are you kidding?
For you. A little testimonial gift. It says Alberta Christie Chair twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one, City of Santa Ana Historic Resources Commission. Thank you for your service and leadership. So this is a a gavel which I bought at an estate sale some years ago, was waiting for the right candidate. So I had it engraved and I told men, I said, we, we need to do that for Alberta. So anyway, Alberta, I hope that you will you will place this on your bookshelf and have fond memories of, of your time as Chair of our commission.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. It, it was a pleasure to serve as Chair. And during this time period, and we did a lot, you know, as far as working with the general plan to make areas of historical significance to be identified and preserved. And I got the fees.
Yes.
Reduced. For putting homes on you know, homes on our historic register. And also the Millsa reduced to you know, five hundred dollars rather than twenty-five hundred dollars to put it on our register and seven thousand five hundred for the Mills Act. A reduction of quite a bit of money so that we could preserve and that everyone had a chance because you have history. You know, not only on Seventeenth Street, you have north, you have east, you have west, and you have south. Where there are homes over there with distinctive styles. And in addition, we have homes that a lot of our historic figures who've moved back in the forties, fifties and sixties helped move Santa Ana forward. That need to be recognized in the east southwest and the west part of our of city. So thank you so much. I, I I'm overwhelmed. Thank you. Thank you all.
Well, it, it would appear that you were nearly speechless, but not you overcame that. So.
I'm a former councilwoman. What do you do?
Yeah. All right. Well, again, thank you for your service. All right. Before we begin, I would like to remind my fellow commissioners to turn off your microphones, to turn your microphones on when speaking and off when not speaking. And when speaking, place the microphone about four inches away from you so that all can hear you. Thank you. At this time, I'd also like to announce that Commissioner McLaughlin is no longer on the Historic Resource Commission as his position on the Planning Commission is now vacant. Did he resign from the Planning Commission?
Council, the appointed council member appointed a replacement member which was sworn in at last night's council meeting.
Oh, okay. All right. Members of the public may attend the Historic Resource Commission meetings in person or virtually via Zoom. I now invite the Commission's Secretary to describe the way the public can access and participate in this meeting.
This meeting is being livestreamed via our portal at www.santana primegov.com-public-portal. If you would like to provide a public comment, you may do so in the following ways. Join the meeting via Zoom and enter meeting ID number eight four five six two five two six four nine three. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, select the hand icon to let us know you would like to speak. You will be called upon the name you entered. You can also join the meeting by calling six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three. Enter meeting ID number eight four five six two five two six four nine three. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, press nine to let us know you would like to speak. You will be called upon the last three digits of your phone number. After you are called upon, you may press six to unmute yourself. For those who are attending this meeting in person and would like to provide public comment, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into the secretary. All speakers will have three minutes to speak. I will alert you when your time's up.
Okay, all right. Moving on to public comments, non-agenda items. Madam Secretary, does anyone wish to speak?
If you're attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on non-agenda items, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into the secretary. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to comment on non-agenda items, please select the hand icon and unmute yourself. If you are calling in and would like to comment on non-agenda items, please dial nine and then six to unmute yourself. We do not have any speakers.
Okay, all right. Moving on to the consent calendar. One motion for all consent items unless the item is pulled for separate discussion. Is there a motion to approve item A, the minutes from the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting? Item B, excused absences, if any, and item C, certified local government twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two annual report.
So I'm moved by the calendar items A and B.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Cornelius and a second by Janelle Hardy, yes. Okay, Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Christie.
Yes.
Commissioner Cornelius.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Yes.
Commissioner Haregi.
Yes.
Commissionership. Vice Chair Murashi.
Yes.
Chair Rush.
Yes.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioner Carpenter and Commissionership absent.
Okay. That concludes a consent calendar. Moving on to the business calendar section session. I will now review the process for the public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the Commission. Public hearing will be opened. The applicant will be given the opportunity to speak, limited to fifteen minutes. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. Applicant will be given the opportunity to respond to comments made by the public, limited to five minutes. Public hearing will then be closed. Discussion will return to the Commission with formal action taken to approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address. State whether you support, oppose, or are neutral to the proposal. Your statement should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge. Please note that the formal action by the Historic Resources Commission shall become effective after the ten-day appeal period unless the city council holds a public hearing on the matter. Then the formal action will become effective on the day following the hearing and formal decision by the city council. An appeal from the decision or requirement of the Commission must be filed with the clerk of the council and a copy sent to the Planning Commission, Planning Department within ten days of the date of the Commission's action. The appeals to be made by any interested party, individual, or group. Our first item. This is the time and place for the Historic Exterior Modification Application two oh two three dash oh three for the property located at twenty-one forty North Ross, historically known as the Fuller Ut House, located within the single-family residence R one zoning district. Before we begin doing the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this item? Please, yes. Commissioner Christie.
I visited the home, did not speak to the applicants on Sunday.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to declare? Okay. Okay, Andrea Duvitch Haywood will now provide a brief presentation.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. It's great to be here. So I will start with item number one, the exterior. I'm sorry, the Historic Exterior Modification Application for the Fuller Ut House. Property is located at two one four zero North Ross Street. The proposed application is to allow a new rear addition, which will create a new master bedroom and a walk-in closet. There will also be an interior remodel consisting of a new master bathroom and a kitchen remodel. The addition will have new fenestration and it will also repurpose one existing window. Staff recommends the Commission approved HEMA number twenty twenty-three dash zero three. The property which is outlined in green is located in the Floral Park neighborhood on North Ross Street between West Santa Clara Avenue to the north and West Nineteenth Street to the south. The Fuller Ut House is an English Revival style property, also known as Tudor Revival. It was built in nineteen thirty. It was listed as number four hundred and eighty-eight on the Santa Ana Register of Historical Properties in two thousand and seven, and it is a contributive property. It is also a contributor to Floral Park National Register Historic District, which was newly approved. And because of the National Register Historic District status, it is automatically listed on the California Register of Historical Resources, making this property a resource at the local, state, and national level. Project description. The project includes a two hundred and sixty-one square foot, single-level rear addition to accommodate the new master bedroom and walk-in closet. The kitchen remodel slash expansion will include two hundred and twenty-nine square feet. There will be a new interior master bathroom of one hundred and forty-four square feet. The rear addition shall include the new French doors with a single full-height casement window and new double-hung wood windows to match those that are on the side facades, along with one new casement window. There will be a new front-facing gable at the rear addition, which will have the same dimensions as that on the primary facade. However, it will have an additional two-inch by two-inch fascia trim. This difference was intentionally added in the design so to differentiate the new gable from the historic residence. The kitchen remodel includes one new Dutch door with an upper light and two new dual-glazed hung windows at the rear facade. Unlike the building's original windows, all of the new double-hung windows will not include the upper sash horn. Again, this is to differentiate the new windows from the old. All new windows shall be wood, dual-glazed, and they will match the existing windows' wood trim. One existing double-hung wood window at the rear facade shall be repurposed to the south side facade to provide window symmetry with an existing window. Currently, there are two windows on the south facade that are not aligned, so this change will provide the symmetry that they're looking for. Existing and proposed site plan. The darker shading indicates the rear addition and the lighter shading is within the existing building's footprint. And it includes the interior remodel. The new master bathroom is towards the bottom or the north. And the kitchen remodel is towards the top of the image or the south. Demolition plan. Again, the proposed work is outlined in red. The kitchen remodel will include removing an existing laundry room and a nook space to create a larger kitchen. The, in the rear yard, the rear stairs, the fence, and a single pedestrian door on the detached garage will be removed. Proposed first-floor plan. The rear addition is outlined in red, indicating the new master bedroom and the walk-in closet. Within the building footprint is the new master bathroom and the kitchen remodel that we saw a few slides ago. And at the rear yard, there will be a new deck, a new fence, and a new pedestrian door at the detached garage. The door at the garage is being moved intentionally because the new deck will block the existing door. And the new deck will be approximately twenty inches above grade. Proposed roof plan. The addition is indicated in the shaded portion at the building's rear. The roof slope will match that of the existing building. Existing and proposed rear west elevations. The image on the left is the existing elevation. The red arrows point to all items to be removed, which includes one double-hung wood window and a single pedestrian door. The window at the far right of the first image on the left will be repurposed to the south side facade. So they're saving that window and they're moving it. The image on the right shows the proposed elevation with the new gable. There will be a new French doors with a casement window under the gable roof. And a new Dutch door just over to the right. A new pair of double-hung wood windows will also be added to the far right. Proposed side north elevation. The addition is outlined in red. You can see that it maintains the historic character through a continued roof line with matching roof materials, consistent plaster siding to match existing, and compatible windows to match existing. Then existing and proposed side south elevations. The upper image is existing and the lower image is proposed. Again, the addition is consistent with the historic residence. The standalone window that's outlined in red indicates the existing window at the rear facade that will be relocated to the south side facade. This will provide the symmetry as this facade at this facade with, with the existing window just left of it. This change will also support the interior kitchen remodel. Secretary of Interior Standards, this project complies with all ten standards. Standards four, six, seven, and eight are not applicable. It complies with the guidelines for preserving, rehabilitating, restoring, and reconstructing historic buildings. Then landscape conditions of approval. Staff wanted to point out that the specific conditions of approval were added to the resolution regarding maintenance of existing landscape. Such conditions include maintaining the front yard landscape so that all the building's character-defining features are visible from the right-of-way. Additionally, vegetation growth along the existing residence and on the detached garage shall be removed and maintained. Staff recommends that the Commission adopt a resolution approving a certificate of appropriateness for Historic Exterior Modification Application number twenty twenty-three dash zero three. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Haywood, for that presentation. Does the Commission have any questions or comments of staff?
I do.
Commissioner Cornelius?
Thank you for your presentation. You mentioned that the Secretary standard four, six, seven, and eight were applicable. I just wanted a full explanation as to why.
Oh, you're asking why they were not applicable? Sure. They just don't apply to the project. I can read them to you. So standard four, changes to a property that have acquired historic significance in their own right will be retained and preserved. There are no changes that have been made and they're not being retained. Six is deteriorated historic features will be repaired rather than replaced. Where the severity of deterioration requires replacement of a distinctive feature, the new feature will match the old in design, color, texture, and where possible, materials. Replacement of missing features will be substantiated by documentary and physical evidence. They're not doing that. They're not fixing any deteriorated historical features. And then number seven, chemical or physical treatments, if appropriate, will be undertaken using the gentlest means possible. They're not doing any of those treatments. And then number eight refers to archaeology.
I have one final question. It said something about the sash horns on the doors that being included on, on the remodel or?
Oh, the, the window, the horn?
Yes, yeah, the horns.
Yes.
Is that something that was prominent on the other, on the previous, on the, on the version now? And it just can't include or?
That was done intentionally so that, I'm not sure if you're familiar, but a lot of historic homes have these wood double or single-frame windows where there's a horn, there's like a little notch on the side that you can pull it up and down. And when you see that design, it, it indicates a historic window. And so the architect decided to exclude that in the addition because we didn't want to create any confusion that it could be an original window. So it was done intentionally.
Got you. Thank you.
Are there any other questions by Mission? Let me see, what I have a question, and that is, what is the distance between the termination of the rear deck and the back fence?
I, I looked up all the measurements except that one. I can pull it up for you right now.
I mean, it wouldn't appear to be very big.
I don't have that right in front of me.
Well, give me a ballpark number, just a scientific wild-ass guess. We call that a swag number.
I'm seeing the, the, the new addition to the rear property line is eighty-one feet four inches, but the, the deck goes out a little further.
In length?
No, I'm sorry. The, the, you're asking the distance from the deck to the rear property line?
Yeah.
So the addition to the rear property line, so the, the backyard space is eighty feet, not the actual construction.
Well, I'm trying to, I, I mean, as we looked, as we looked at the diagram you put up here, it, it appeared to me that, you know, of course, there's a deck there now, it appears. There's an existing deck there now, which is going to be demolished. And they're going to build a new deck that's going to be off the new addition, right?
Yes.
Okay. And, and in fact, that new deck, that's what necessitates the relocation of the door. The, the pedestrian door that goes from the yard into the garage. Because you wouldn't be able to use that door anymore because of the deck. So the door is being relocated to the west. Okay, so I'm, my question is from you, where you, the steps terminate on the deck from that spot to the fence, what is that, six feet, twelve feet? Ten feet?
I mean.
Your swag number.
To what's, to which fence are you referring to? I'm looking at the site plan right now.
The fence that would run north and south, it would be on the western boundary of the property. You see, back, back up one, yeah. Back up, wow.
Well, this is.
You need to.
Try to zoom in.
So this, the door right now, I'm assuming is closer to the front of the garage. And it has to be relocated because of the deck. So the deck looked like it's encroaching into the depth of the garage about halfway, I imagine is about ten, eleven feet.
You mean the deck now or deck when it's done?
The new deck.
The new deck?
Yeah.
So, so.
It will extend beyond the garage front about eleven, twelve feet.
Huh?
About eleven to twelve feet beyond the front of the garage.
So most, most garages are around twenty by twenty? So that means that the garage is probably built on a zero property line, is that right?
On the one side of it, correct.
Oh, on the, on the, on the south side. How about on the back? How much setback is there between the west side of the garage and the north-south fence on the western border?
It looks like probably about fifty feet.
Fifty?
Fifty feet from the back of the garage to the rear property line.
Would the homeowner concur with that? There's fifty feet from the back of your garage to your, to your westernmost fence?
It's a deep lot.
Huh, okay, well, I, you know, you might say, well, what, what's the point? What am I making a big deal? To me, by looking at this, and of course, you're not, this is not three D or whatever. So it almost appeared that you're gobbling up all of your backyard with this deck and, and, and there will. The other thing that I have a question about, and maybe it's answered because you'd have ingress and egress perhaps through the door, the, the pedestrian door of the garage, is that how are you going to get lawnmowers and all that into the backyard? Except by hoisting them over the deck? Is that going to be a problem? This is not so much a historical issue, but it's a practical issue.
Chair, if you want to reserve the question for the applicant to, when?
Okay.
We're still discussing at this step point, but that's maybe a very good question we can ask the applicant.
So, all right. Okay, there's no other questions of the Commission, so the public hearing is now open. Does the Commission have any? Does the commission have any questions uh or comments of the applicant? Why don't you folks come up, come on up to the uh. Lecturn. Okay, so you you already know what my question is, so I'll let you chat.
Yeah, uh so we would uh take the um the lawnmower or any of the yard equipment through uh the side yard, the garage. Uh we've toyed with having a maybe a little shed to house it in the backyard. Um but uh we would definitely make sure that there's room to to do that. I do my own yard work. Um and so.
I don't think that's allowed in floral.
Um but uh yes, we would make sure that there is plenty of room to to be able to bring in the law.
I mean, it's really not a historical question. It's just a practical. I'm just thinking. You know, are you making yourself landlocked here or something, you know, or 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 tool locked?
Or I'll make my, you know, son lift it up and.
I mean, I overall, I I love what you're doing. I I think it's tastefully done and and uh looks. Looks great in in my view, so um. Uh does any of the commissioners have any other questions of the applicant? Okay, looks like I'm the only one with hangups, you know, so.
Well, I I I did have a question.
Yes, Ed.
Um two things. Number one is, thank, thank you very much for even going to the point of taking the existing window. In the back and moving it to the side to make all that uniform. That's great. Thank you. And then just curious, did you share the your your plans with the neighbors and did they have any? Questions, concerns, or any comments?
We we share our plans with everybody who's willing to listen. Um it know everybody's uh excited for us and and um. Uh no, no concerns or questions.
Great. Well, thank you. Well done.
Thank you.
It appears that most of what most of what they're doing. Won't even be visible from the street. So but but nonetheless, you've done a tasteful job of making it blend into the architecture and and all of that, so. Um no, that's very nice. Would would you folks have any other comments you'd like to make?
No.
No, okay. And is this your architect or? Okay, you have no comments?
Andrea did a wonderful job for something.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, okay, Recording Secretary, have we received any written communication?
We have not received any written communications. If you're attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on this item, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into the secretary. If you are participating, we assume we would like to comment on this item, please select the hand icon and unmute yourself. And if you are calling in and would like to comment on this item, please dial nine and then six to unmute yourself. Chair, we do not have any speakers.
Okay, um. All right, this public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve this matter in a second?
I uh I move that we. Um adopt the appropriateness resolution uh for.
This is Commissioner Christie, by the way, for the recorded record.
I just lost it. Um, hey Jim. Thank you. Uh Historic Exterior Modification Number twenty twenty-three dash oh three. For the property located at twenty-one forty North Ross Street. Uh historically known as Fuller House. Located within the single-family residence or one zoning district.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion, second, second secretary, and we can please call for a one call vote.
Commissioner Carpenter? Commissioner Christie?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornelius? Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Haregi?
Yes.
Commissionership? Vice Chairman Roshi?
Yes.
Chair Rush?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornelius?
Hi.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioner Carpenter and Commissionership absent.
All right, congratulations. All right, very good. Okay, um. Again, congratulations to you. This is the time and place for Historic Exterior Modification Application. Two oh two-three dash oh two for the property located at. Three zero two West Fourth Street, historically known as the Gilmore Gilmore Block. Within the Transit Zoning Code S D eighty-four. Before we begin, do any commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this item? Commissioner Christie?
Thank you. Uh we met with Executive Director Men and uh Senior Planner um Allen. Uh over the plans and re-modification I did on a Monday and. You know. And now Hardy too.
Uh Commissioner Hargie? Okay, any other commissioners have anything to share?
Same.
Okay, Commissioner Cornelius, yes, you met with staff, as did I. I met with staff. Uh for a full presentation on this project, which I think was a, beg your pardon.
As did Commissioner.
And Ed.
Yes.
Ed and Ed Marashi did as well, so um Commissioner Hardy, did you participate in a?
Yes, I did meet with staff also.
Good.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
Fair rush.
Yeah, I I think that was a good idea. Um. Um men, that was excellent of you and your staff to do that, I think, to answer. A lot of background questions and clarify certain things, so. Okay, um. Andrea Dumavich Haywood will now provide a brief presentation. Andrea?
Thank you, Chair. I will be presenting item number two, the Historic Exterior Modification Application for the Gilmaker Block. Property is located at three oh two West Fourth Street. The proposed application is to allow construction of a rooftop addition. With new indoor and outdoor seating and interior and exterior building modifications. In order to support a new restaurant use. Staff recommends the commission approve Hema Number twenty twenty-three dash zero two. The property is located on a corner lot in downtown Santa Ana's National Register Historic District. It is located at one of the last remaining historic intersections in downtown. Where all four corner lots contain historic buildings that are primarily intact. Fourth Street is to the north and Broadway is to the east. An alleyway is directly south of the building. And the building's west facade abuts an adjacent commercial building to the west. The Gilmaker Block is a brick vernacular commercial style building. It was constructed in the eighteen eighties. However, it was rebuilt in nineteen twenty. With salvaged materials, including some of the original brick. As well as the the glass in the storefronts that you can see in this photo. It was listed as number two hundred and forty-four on the Santa Ana Historical Register in two thousand and one. And it is currently listed as a key property. It is listed in the California Register of Historical Resources. And it is a contributor to the downtown Santa Ana National Register Historic District. So this property is also a resource at the local, state, and national levels. Here is a historic photo from circa nineteen twenties. The image shows the property's two primary north and east facades. Although changes have been made over time, the majority of the building's character defining features. Including the brick ornamentation. Remain on the property as seen today. This image also confirms that the two large windows. To be replaced on the east facade are not original and they have changed over time. Here is another historic photo, which is undated. We are viewing the north facade, which again shows many of the architectural elements that are extant on the existing building today. Project description. The project includes a renovation of an existing eight thousand eight hundred sixty-three square foot. Single-story commercial structure with three storefronts. And one uh restaurant in the fourth storefront. A new rooftop addition of approximately four thousand fifty-six square feet. And in addition, in addition to that, a new one thousand six hundred thirty-two square foot outdoor seating area. With a metal trellis at the rooftop. The north facade will be repaired um and replaced in kind to maintain historic character. Um originally, the east facade was proposed with two new. Roll-up metal garage doors to replace nonoriginal windows. However, after additional project analysis. Staff has asked that the applicant investigate feasible alternatives. Therefore, the conditions of approval have since been updated. Um with a request that alternative designs be explored and approved by the historic consultant. If an alternative is identified, the applicant shall revise the roll-up garage door design. At the east facade, additional changes include two paired pedestrian door modifications for ADA access. Which include exterior stair removal, lowering the floors, and further recessing the doors into the building. This being and proposed site plan. You can see that the square building footprint will not change. The yellow outline image reflects the proposed rooftop addition, which has a smaller overall footprint than the existing building. First floor demolition plan. Oh, I can't see the numbers. Uh so for number one, it's pointing towards the north facade. Um it indicates that the nonoriginal metal storefront will be replaced with new paired. Wood doors and new glazing to match original. This is the one storefront that has been replaced with um. Metal material, so they'll be restoring it back to wood. Item two points to two of the storefronts that are at the the western part of the building. Um that will include the removal of a spacer to create true double. Wood doors with a single transom at both storefronts. Currently, there is a wood spacer that's dividing. The doors and the transom, so they're just removing that and restoring it back to the configuration that matches the other storefronts. Item three. Oh, it's item number, it's number two. It's pointing to the north facade. And it's indicates two of the western storefronts. It's at the doors, the front doors and the transom above. Number three points to the nonoriginal window openings. That will be removed and replaced with new operable windows. The original multi-light transoms above the window openings will be preserved. And then item four, also on the east facade, points to the reconfigured doors. Original doors will be retained and further recessed. With the floors lowered and the exterior stairs removed for the ADA access. And then lastly, on the east facade, number five. There will be a new door opening added to the facade with a new metal door to accommodate electrical room access. The proposed first floor plan. The project shall maintain four divided spaces. And storefronts with the change of use at the far east storefront from commercial retail to restaurant. Um kitchen and back of house spaces, which include two new staircases, one new elevator. Trash room with a grease interceptor, a mechanical and electrical rooms. Would be located at the rear of the building and accessed through the east and the rear alley facades. And then restrooms for all four storefronts will be reconfigured. A proposed rooftop floor plan, here we are looking um at the rooftop. The seating lounge area at two thousand six hundred square feet. Along with the seven hundred and sixty-eight square foot kitchen. Um two restrooms, two staircases, one elevator, minimal storage space. Um that will all be within the interior addition. The outdoor seating area consisting of one thousand six hundred thirty-two square feet. Will be located under a metal trellis and contained by the permanent metal plant planters surrounding it. There will be a fifteen-foot setback from the edge of the building. And the outdoor seating area to the north and the east primary facades. The addition will be set back mostly fifteen feet from the rear alley facade with the exception of a staircase at the rear property line. And then here we have the existing elevations. The upper left image is the east elevation, outlined in red indicates the two. Um windows that will be changing to operable windows. And then below that is the north elevation, the four primary storefronts. Um that will be protected in place and restored as needed. And the image at the upper right is the alleyway south facade. Uh that is utilitarian in nature and the different color combinations you see just show the. Changes that will be made um in order to access the mechanical, electrical, kitchen, um trash room. Now we have proposed north and east elevations. The image at the top is the north and the bottom image is the east. The addition will have a modest design that is uh meant to not overpower the historic building at the ground floor. It is intentionally designed with minimal ornament ornamentation. In order to comply with the Secretary of Interior Standards. Standard number nine states that new additions, quote, shall be differentiated from the old. And will be compatible with the historic materials, features, size, scale, and proportion enassing. To protect the integrity of the property and its environment. The addition you can see contains white brick just above the windows to reference the historic building's brick. And it's designed with window bay patterns that give reference to the four original storefronts without mirroring the historic design. The addition will utilize a dark brick, darker brick that is found. On the historic building and will be laid in a different bond pattern to differentiate it from the historic building. The addition will be sixteen feet, six inches tall with a parapet. Bringing the overall building height to thirty-six feet, six inches. The proposed south elevation, this elevation will remain utilitarian in design and use. The ground floor will incorporate new roll-up garage-style metal doors and. Pedestrian doors for access to the back of house building operations. Some of the windows shall remain and a few existing doors will be infilled with brick. Here you can see that the rooftop addition will have no fenestration. Um keeping in line with the utilitarian design. Secretary of Interior Standards, this project complies with all the ten standards. Um standards four and eight are not applicable, and I'll just remind the commission. Four is changes to a property that have acquired historic significance. In their own right will be retained and preserved, and there have been no changes that have. Um acquired significance. And standard eight is uh relates to archaeological resources to be protected. So this project complies with the guidelines for preserving, rehabilitating, restoring, and reconstructing historic buildings. And then um almost lastly, the conditions of approval, I just wanted to give a brief overview of what we have since added. Um after additional project analysis, the following conditions of approval have been added to the resolution. To ensure the second story addition and resulting building modifications are integrated as appropriately as possible, so. The first item is. the first item is, as I mentioned earlier, to explore roll-up garage door alternatives with his the historic consultant. If an alternative is identified, the applicant shall revise the design. The second item is the rooftop addition shall be shall better reference the historic building by carrying additional white brick, glazing, glass block, and painting some exteriors red. The historic consultant will verify with staff and will ensure that if any of these changes are incorporated, they will meet the Secretary of Interior standards. Item three is to review vestibles on the ground floor to revise design or install security measures such as roll-up gate to prevent loitering, debris, and litter accumulation. And then number four is to have painted white brick at the rooftop to change to a glazed brick to match the historic building for longevity and maintenance. Number five is aluminum trellis shall have a marine slash industrial coating. And this is also for maintenance, long-term maintenance. And then item six is movable or permanent shading shall be incorporated at the rooftop trellis. The staff recommends that the commission adopt a resolution approving a certificate of appropriateness for historic exterior modification application number twenty twenty-three dash zero two. And then just a final note, we do have the materials board for all the proposed rooftop materials. We can pass it along if you want to take another closer look. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Okay, does the commission have any questions or comments of staff? Commissioner Christie?
Andrew. If you go back one where you have. Go back, go for that. Go ahead. On the more roll-up garage door alternative. Oh. With historic consultant, if alternative is not identified, the applicant shall re-device design. Okay, explain that a little bit more for us. Does it hold up the project?
No. No, it should not. So upon further analysis of the design, we we did get feedback about the roll-up doors and questions if if there's a alternative design that could be more compatible than metal roll-up garage doors. So we have asked the applicant to work with the historic consultants to see if they can find any other feasible option that would work, that would be more compatible. One idea is the accordion-style doors. But they will review this and see if if any alternative is feasible. And if it is and it meets the standards, then we will ask them to revise the design.
Remind me again, then, when we had our meeting and the building and the roll-up looked like it was kind of a glass. Was I wrong? Did I look at the wrong thing?
If you can pull up the image again. So the roll-up door is a combination of metal and glass to replace the windows.
Okay.
We are correct. It is just glass as a part of material of the door.
This is glass, right? On the roll-up?
On the roll-up doors on the east side of the building.
Along Broadway.
Is it this one? Okay, so that is metal and glass? Or it's?
Correct.
Going up this way. I thought I saw glass.
There, there is glass. There's metal framing around the glass.
Okay, so you, what you're saying is that the glass would stay, but the metal needs to go?
What staff is recommending is that that whole system of the roll-up door be reevaluated to something that is more compatible with the existing vertical doors and windows, which could include potentially accordion doors with glass or a step doors, you know, a system that allows the doors to be opened and retracted. So we're not imposing a specific system. What we're asking the architect to do is to evaluate whether some will be feasible, and that would be implementing the one that's most feasible.
Okay, so it won't, I mean, if they don't come up with another alternative, what happens then?
If if there is no other alternative, we will continue with the proposed roll-up doors because they are compatible, but there's question if there is anything more compatible. So that's what we're inquiring about.
What the condition has been created is to allow some flexibility while we don't think that another system cannot replace the garage door. We don't want to also prohibit the project from moving forward. If working with the architect and the architectural historian, it would found that, you know, the new system, there are some issues with that. So again, while we don't think there is an issue, we want to keep and maintain the flexibility of being able to have various options.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying that. And then since this is a major historic building, it's key. Are you going to have some kind of plaque or something inside with this? And maybe pictures of the old building or renovation going through to let people know this is what it looked like then and look at it now.
Currently, in the resolution, there is a condition of approval to add a bronze plaque. We don't currently have a condition to add a photo, but we could, we could add that, we could consider that.
Would you? On the tour, this is your mostly the plaque and stuff worth of stuff.
Well, I I would be delighted if they had a had a bronze plaque that that I think maybe should have the likeness of Joe Gilmacher on it and and talk about the history of Mr. Gilmacher in the building. And and perhaps maybe off to the side, they could have a couple of photos, historic photos. That would be a nice, nice touch. Yes. I think that would be, you know, that's what draws people who are downtown is its history. So anyway, but the applicant can address that down the road. So Commissioner Christie, are you finished?
Um, I just said, I knew Joe personally, Gilmacher. He was a character. He loved, loved Santa Ana. He loved the historic nature. And I'm sure he's looking down going, way to go. Way to go. I mean, you know, you know, he passed over twenty years ago. But anyway, but he was really one of those. If you ever met him in person, you never would forget, but he was really with the downtown moving that one forward and really knowing if he was here today. He would be very pleased with this the building as it is today.
It's okay. Are there any other commissioners? Commissioner Hardy?
Yes, thank you, Chair Rush. I know I had asked if this building, three oh two West Fourth Street, is currently for sale. Was were you able to ascertain the information from the property owner about that?
I did not, but no, it's, it is not for sale. It's, it is owned right now and it's vacant.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hargie?
Yes, I did walk the building and I had a meeting with staff. The roll-up doors, although they might be conforming, there's a little dissonance in my eyes because you have these big glass panes. So if they could find something that would feel more like windows versus the door. And I did go to, I was aware that Lucille's on Main Place. They have windows that fold up. And that was a rather creative, so I hope they can find something that fits more because garage roll-up doors are, even though they have glass, they still garage roll-up doors. So that would be really nice. I am pleased to see that instead of painted brick that's glazed. So that's excellent to, hopefully it fits with the standards. But to keep that feel of that architecture would be excellent. And a suggestion, I saw all the glass block over the the top. I know you cannot replicate. But to use some of those elements inside the columns inside either in the bar or different areas would be really a lovely touch to look into the architecture. So yes, the 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 roll-up doors were my bigger concern. The back. I walked through the alley and I can see a lot of value in changing that and and keep, but it's all brick, so that would work very well. And to make it ADA compliant, I was in San Francisco and I saw what they did to lower the furrows and have the cement and that was, that would work too. So thank you.
Anyone, any other commissioners have any comments?
Okay, Ms. Haywood, I have a couple of questions. Does the building presently have a basement?
No, does not. We don't know. No.
How about unofficially? There's no basement. Unusual. Well, this building, while it's not especially incredibly remarkable as period commercial retail, it is, it is the last original intersection in town. So it is special in that regard. And so that's very, very important. And yes, I would agree that Mr. Gilmacher would probably be quite delighted with what's being proposed, I think, for his building. And I too, and I think I was the original one to bring up the issue of the my objection of the roll-up doors. I I think the accordion style. And I don't object to metal, something that's done with panels maybe on the bottom to mimic a wood panel door, but in glass on top. And then, of course, when they're open, that they'll have that free flow of people and environment from inside to outside. It's just a matter of when they're closed, what does the building look like? And the roll-up doors don't do it for me. I just, I'm very much opposed to that. So there's just got to be a more historic look that's available. I got to believe that. So another question I have is it was mentioned that along the Broadway side that there's a, towards the south end of the building, there's a door that's either going to be replaced or added for the electrical room. And it's going to be become a metal door. Right? Is that, is that an opening to be added or replaced?
Yeah, it's a new opening.
It's a new opening. Okay. And that metal door, can we request that that metal door, and I presume for code or safety purposes, that's why it's going to be metal, right? Because it's going into an electrical room? Is that why it's going to be metal? Doesn't matter. I don't care. But it, they're specifying it's going to be metal, right?
Yes.
Okay, so rather than just some bland metal door, can we request that the metal door be something that that is period? You know, compatible. It's three or four panel, five-panel door. You know, they can make up a metal door to look like it's wood, like it was original to the building, right? Can that be done?
We can certainly condition it for architectural door instead of specifying any specific details. That's just, if you can look at the condition of what you're saying, architectural design door.
Preservation is all about detail. So I I don't want to wind up with something that looks so bland. I mean, again, this is along Broadway, which is a Broadway and Fourth Street are the main facades of this building. I get it along the backside on the alley. I'm not having a hissy fit over that, but this is on Broadway.
Well, what I like to do is the architect is in the audience and let's have that question.
Okay. The other question I have is, is there, am I to understand there's going to become a kitchen downstairs and upstairs?
Yes, I can show it. So this is, we're currently looking at the ground floor floor plan. There's a kitchen and a restaurant. And then now we're at the rooftop. There's a kitchen. And this could also be, it could be two restaurants within the space within the building, or it could be one that occupies the first and second floor.
Probably maybe the applicant can address the issue again, you know, not our problem, but I wonder from a leasing standpoint, is it likely that there would be a restaurant with two kitchens? Or more likely that it'll be split up and leased as two different restaurants, but it can address, that's nothing that's, you know, we're going to have all that much purview over. The other question I have, and that is, has to do with signage. And I I know we've touched on this before, and that is historic signage. We we have talked about a historic signage ordinance, and this has been, it's very fungible, it seems like. We sometimes do it and oftentimes don't. And I just, I want to make certain that we don't lose another building and all of a sudden we wind up with some garish signage on the building that is not, not appreciative of, you know, again, they're, they're, here they are, the last original intersection in the city. I I'm all for, I don't want the business to have to keep a light under a bush. They need, they need, but you know, there's all kinds of period appropriate, whether it's a blade sign or or whether it's what do you call it? Neon signage or whatever. I'm all for that. I know there was some guidelines drawn up years ago by Joe Muzel, God rest his soul. And but I, that's another concern of mine. I'm not particularly happy with the signage that went on the United Auto Service Building at First and First and Main. Mike drilled a thousand holes in the facade of that building when we, when we complained about it. We were told, oh, don't worry. When it ever comes down, we'll, we'll have a special mason go in and fill in all those holes. Jesus, it looks like Swiss cheese today. It's ridiculous. So are we going to address that in some fashion? That's, that's another concern that I have. Okay, I guess no other questions of the commission? So we will, we will open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. And does the commission have any questions of the applicant? You folks can come forward now.
Hello, you would you state your name and, you know?
My name is.
And all of that?
My name is Mitch Huffman. I am a regional acquisitions and development with Pintar Investment Company.
With who?
Pintar Investment Company.
Okay.
We're based out of San Juan Capistrano. I'm actually a resident of Santa Ana myself.
Oh.
So some, some background on Pintar, our founder Jeff has been in real estate for about thirty years, doing various retail and residential developments all across the world, actually. Then he founded PIC, Pintar Investment Company, in 2010 with emphasis on acquiring existing single-family homes. And so that's what he's been doing for the past twelve or so years. And then in 2019, we launched an opportunity zone fund. And that phone, that fund was focused on finding projects like this in opportunity zones. And for those who aren't familiar, opportunity zones are areas that the government has identified as being, I guess, they incentivize investors to go in and invest in those areas. And so for that reason, this would be a long-term hold. I can explain them more detail if you'd like. So me personally, I've been with Pintar Investment Company for about five and a half years. I mentioned I'm a resident of Santa Ana. And so once we started looking at various opportunity zones, I took a look at downtown Santa Ana, and I was excited to see that it actually fell inside of one. And so once we found this opportunity, you know, I think we had to do everything we could to get control of it because we do understand the importance of this intersection within the historic district. because we do understand the importance of this intersection within the historic district. I, I mentioned I'm a, I'm a Santa Ana resident again, so I, I come down here all the time. I'm a regular at Chapter One for Arsenal Soccer Games. Actually, on, on Monday, I just got married at the historic courthouse. So this area is very special for me. So we've owned the building since 2020. Initially, our plan was to add two levels of residential units on top of the building. We spent probably a year plus, me and this team back here. Architect's Resources Group is our historical consultant. They've been with us from the very beginning. Same with Architects Orange, AO. We got to a point where we decided that we needed to pivot. And so that's when we decided to go with this rooftop restaurant concept. And so, working closely with city staff, we wanted to make sure that we designed something that didn't take away from the existing building, so historical character, but still added something and activated a corner, because as you guys all, all know, this building can use a little bit of help. And so we understand that we wanted to make something really special. And so we spent a lot of time coming up with something that we think works really well for us as well as the city. So, thank you.
Did you, did you want to address any of the things I brought up or?
So you asked a question about signage. I believe there are certain requirements that will be held to throughout with, with signage, and we plan to adhere to them. So with, for example, there's a slide that shows the Broadway elevation. And that says, I think, Broadway vibes. That's an example of one of the options of the signage that we're envisioning, something that adds to the circle of character without, you know, distracting or taking away. A blade sign on the corner would be fantastic as well. So that's something that, you know, all of those decisions will be made alongside our historical consultant. You also asked about, I should probably address the garage doors, I guess. We've talked about it enough. We will absolutely explore alternatives. That's okay. So we'll, we'll work with that, work off, offline with that. Multiple kitchens. We've discussed with various potential tenants and retail brokers about, you know, the possibility of having one tenant down below, one tenant up top, or maybe one tenant taking over the entire space for, for the kitchens. In that case, we wouldn't have two kitchens. It would just be one. But from our conversations, it sounds like the square footages that we've designated here would work best for two separate restaurants than one. It would just be too big for one. Were there any other questions?
Well, what else? I brought up the issue, I mean, to me it's minor, but regarding this metal door on Broadway, you have any problem with, with that?
It's metal right now because that's what code requires.
Well, I don't, I have no objection of the metal, but I'm just saying, then get a door that is designed, you know, you can order a door that's something that doesn't look like just a plain vanilla door. So something that has two or three panels that would look like something that it was was originally there.
Yeah, no, understood. That makes a lot of sense. We were kind of talking about that when we were sitting down. I think that's something that we could absolutely explore, and we'll look at the doors, the existing doors along the alleyway, maybe for inspiration there.
The, the other comment, and I didn't bring this up to Andrea, but you both can address it, and that is that, you know, as I look at this and, and again, we're talking about detail here, but someone brought up that there should be more of this blazed white brick on the addition on the second story to tie it in better with the bottom, and I like that. But I don't know, the more I look at that, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not nutty about how different the upstairs brick in color, that it's such a contrast with downstairs. I get it that it needs to be a little different, but can't, can't we make them, can't we get a color palette there that's a little closer, but different enough so that, you know, I mean, I, I think you'd have to be, you'd have to be a little kind of a dim bulb, not to recognize this is clearly in addition to the building. It was not original. And I just think that at, at the end of the day, that it would look so much better if there wasn't such a stark difference in color. Because as it is, the, the bond pattern of the brick is going to, itself is going to be different. It's going to be different style of brick and, and laid in a different bond pattern, running bond, than what's on the bottom, the first floor. So why can't we get a color that's clo, a closer match? Maybe I'm picking the fly specks out of the pepper, but again, that's what preservation's all about, is the details.
It, it's been a fine line, you know. We wanted to make sure that we weren't exactly mimicking the ground floor of the existing building, while at the same time creating something that was cohesive. So that's why we decided to go with a brick that's a little bit different shade. We didn't include the red details on there. You know, there's, you know, the, the white glazed brick kind of ties it in, but at the same time, it's, you know, we were under the impression that it was supposed to be, you know, distinct, but cohesive, but, you know, I think we can absolutely talk about making the brick a little more, I guess, a little lighter and adding some red.
Give any comment on that, Andrea?
Oh, yeah, I agree. I believe we could make it lighter and just have it be like an off shade, so it doesn't match exactly.
Yeah, because between the texture and the different running bond, there you go, right? So. Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions by the commissioners? Oh, Commissioner Hargie?
Hello, although it's not for, for the approval for this, but the interior, if you can do things to keep that period feel, it would be delightful, because if you walk, you have the outside and then you walk into something so modern or stark, it's, it's a little jarring and you want to maintain that atmosphere because we are historic downtown. So we'd appreciate that. On the smaller details that might not affect, but would enhance, there's columns on the downstairs. If you can do planters, that would, that I suppose would be okay, because they're movable, they're not permanent fixtures. I don't know, you'd have to talk to our staff to see if you could do things to have that same feel and, and to, to feel more cohesive, yet it's distinct. And elements of glass block and the planters or in the bar, things of that nature, that would be lovely. We'd appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
And I understand that Commissioner Marashi has some questions.
Just one, thanks for coming tonight. And do you support the idea of having a bronze plaque outside to honor the original owner?
One hundred percent.
Great, thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Secretary, you handed me several items of folks that want to speak and a item of correspondence. Am I to read this correspondence or just all the commissioners got it?
Received that after the deadline. I, we have also received another public comment that was distributed to the commission prior to the meeting. This is another packet that's going to be distributed, which was received along with the ones that you've already had.
Okay, all right. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call first Mr. Wan Shaw. And he's here to speak on this issue. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, I'm here. I'm in Santa Ana Fourth Street for the business for the nineteen seventy-nine to at this moment, it's forty-four years. I'm now business person and building owners. And I try to the, I say why I stop, they put on the rooftop business on it. Example, this is a, a Santa Ana Fourth Street, Fourth and Broadway. They have twenty-four hours about citizen have the cross street for the walking for the twenty-four hours. And they're going to put on the rooftop for the restaurant on it. And then to the, I saw the, this first time that I saw the, the plan on it, they have all the seating area and Fourth and Broadway. So example, the city of Santa Ana, they have so many murder to, in several years ago. Our first one, everybody remember, with the Starbucks cases. The pupils yelling and they have fighting, and then to people gonna kill. And then to the parking lot, they have yelling and fighting, and then people's die. And third, and Broadway, they have a corner restaurant, they have another murders, they have yelling and fighting, and the people's kill. And then I have a, by next doors, they have empty lot, they have another murders in the right there too. So the Fourth and Broadway, they have so many traffic. So they have rooftop, the people's eating, and then no guarantee, people's yelling and then giggling, joking, and then to some kind of, there's some open spaces, everybody here, there's loud music or whatevers. And then the restaurant in there. And also, that was, City of Santa Ana, they have a register for the, you know, historic areas. And they change for the storefront, and that is not, that is historic areas cannot change for the, that's Udo Fran to the, you know, the roll-up doors. They have a change for the totally looking different way. So the thing is, I have so many things, it's right there, it's right here, but I have to my, another my core, my partners try to talk to. Thank you for your hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Okay, next we have.
Yes.
Your, your time is up, sir.
Yes.
All right, next was Ernie Jimenez.
My name is Ernie Jimenez. I work with Mr. Shaw. So I work here in the city of Santa Ana. Our concerns are, the building has been left unattended and created multiple issues towards our building. The roof project will affect many, including ourselves. If the rooftop access allows people dining, will drop trash over the sidewalks onto our rooftop. The building is on the same level as our building and is adjacent to it. So people will hang out and they will have access to the roofing on the top. It has been multiple occurrences where the building has been left unattended and abandoned. And there has been homeless. That building underneath it, as I was, as I was hearing, is vacant and not for sale. It has been left unattended and there has been fires and homelessness and homeless has been sleeping outside, breaking into the buildings and later breaking into our building. And we have images and police and fire department reports and proof of the abandoned building. Respectfully, we request that this project be looked at closely to avoid any nuisance. And also if the project can be modified in a way to avoid access to our rooftop. My question is to maintain maintenance and security that the building owner will take during and after construction. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Henry, is it Fonseca?
Hello, my name is Henry Fonseca and I'm a resident of Santa Ana, and I was born and raised in Santa Ana. I've been working with Mr. Shaw for over fifteen years now. And we've, are property managers of three ten West Fourth Street in the city of Santa Ana. And the project that, the subject project is basically adjacent to our building. And both are first level, basically, so you have access from one rooftop to the other. And with this, there's a lot of concerns because there's like a hangout area on the project as it, it shows on, on the plans. So if you create a hangout area from three oh two building all the way to three oh eight, you'll have access into our rooftop of three ten West Fourth Street. In addition, the other concerns that we have is because the building, or as, as it was shown, we weren't able to see anything on the plans for the west side of the building. And that's particularly where our, our building rests. And if you're going to be building a second level from the building three oh two to three oh eight, I believe the foundation has to be fixed or modified to support more overload. So I'm more, more than aware that the foundation is probably shared. And there are two walls that separate the building. So basically, that's our concern, because if they're going to be constructing on that side, on the west side of, of three oh, three oh two, then is it going to be affecting our building and its foundation? In addition, we have issues with security at three oh two, all the way through to three oh eight West Fourth Street, in which the building has been left abandoned for over multiple years now, and the building owner has not paid attention to it. One occurrence is that they've broken to three oh eight West Fourth Street and had access into our building three ten. So security measures during construction and after construction, what, what is the building owner going to be doing? And the preservation of the face of the building too. As I mentioned, the building is adjacent to our building, and they both share similar construction materials. So we wouldn't want our building to, to be looked at differently and, and that building to be modified completely different, and it, it'll change its historical value. Thank you.
Okay, is there, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this matter before us?
We don't have any speakers, Chair.
And no one, no one online? Okay, all right. Okay, so that, we have, we've dealt with the written communications as well as any one who wishes to speak. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. And I would like to entertain a motion to approve this matter and a second.
Oh, wait. They have extra questions, run some of the comments, maybe, during the public hearing?
Yes, I, I believe so. Yes, Commissioner Cornelius, you have questions?
So just regarding the rooftop. So is, is there open access between both roofs, to your knowledge?
I, I don't, I don't think so. Certainly not legally. No, it's, it's closed access. I mean, somebody.
Are you able just to address your concerns about patrons going from one roof to the other?
If anybody does that, the police will be called. It is, they're certainly breaking the law. That's not the intention.
Well, there's a setback of, isn't it fifteen feet?
Not on the, on the west side. It's in the back corner, I guess, away from Broadway and Fourth. So the, the outdoor dining area would be, you know, against their, their building.
I see. All right. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Hargie?
I, I still have a question for, for the applicant. I have two questions. That is true, that the buildings are adjacent to each other and you, if there's no conditions, but visually, if I was a client and having dinner, would I want to see an, a hard rooftop next door? Is there something where you could planters and something to create a visual barrier, but also protective barrier, because that's a good neighbor policy to, to, for safety, and I think for both sides would benefit of having something aesthetically pleasing, but also safety, and it's good for both. And then true, our old buildings, if they share the foundation, it would be, and I'm sure you're doing that, that you have your foundation engineers, infrastructure engineers, to make sure that your neighbor would not be affected, because you wouldn't want to be affected. So giving that information or Because you wouldn't want to be affected, so giving that information or sharing what is appropriate would be reasonable and also as you're working that. The brick or the facades of both do not because they're shaking, the, my family is in construction, that, that it, it's protected. So the, those things and I'm sure that is in the plans, but it's good to communicate, so you have a, an excellent, um, communication and. Relationship with your neighbor, so it's just to take in consideration.
Oh, absolutely, and we should change contact information after this.
Um, you want safety because you watch each other and you can, during construction, he would be able to connect with you and you with him to, to be, to keep all that property. Um, and, and good condition and a safe condition as you go along.
Right, and you mentioned, uh, a barrier, I'll, I'll work with our architect team to make sure that there's not, you know, an easy access. From, from our, our dining area outside over to the roof, I think visually also would benefit everybody.
And exactly, jump next door, you do.
Who knows? Yeah, maybe a planter like you mentioned before, um, and then yes, the, the, the foundation work will be, it won't be directly, uh, beneath the existing walls. If we do that, the walls will fall over, so we need to put them inside, we're actually planning to, uh, build a new foundation. That supports the exterior walls and the new rooftop addition, uh, it shouldn't affect them, it, it won't.
Well, the buildings do not have shared foundations, I'm sure.
Well, he, I think he mentioned some concerns about us working on our foundation and it affecting their building, so it, it won't, it's going to be.
Connected, they're, they're touching each other.
The existing walls are, yes, so our.
They touch, but they're two separate walls, yeah.
Yes.
Right, and, uh, I'm confused, um, maybe Ali or Min Yook or Andrea, you can clarify. Mr. Chow's building is the old Tropic Hotel, my memory's correct, it's a two-story building. How could the roof on that building be the same, uh, level as his one-story building, the Gilmaker Building? How could that be?
Part, part of the building is one story, so not the entire building is two-story.
I see.
And the, the building is twenty feet tall, so we're gonna have very high ceilings, uh, on our interiors.
I see, okay, all right, that explains that, all right, um. Okay, uh. But, Com- Commissioner Hardy?
Yes, um. Isn't there, uh, in the plans that we are looking at, is there a west side elevation, an elevation? Missing here?
It's ju- it.
Let me answer that, so the west side is, uh, by necessary with building code, it has to be a blank wall, so there isn't an elevation shown. But essentially, it's a blank wall, um, covered with the exterior material of the brick, there's no openings.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other comments from, questions from commissioners? Okay, uh, thank you, sir, all right. So.
Uh, this one, uh, I can say four, okay, this is only one word.
Sorry, you cannot speak, you've already spoken, you can send that, that through via email and we can distribute that to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chow, okay, uh, do we have a, uh, a motion and a second?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we adopt, uh, the resolution to prove its certificate of appropriateness. Historic exterior modification application. Uh, two zero two three dash, not zero two? Um, yes.
Second.
And we have a, so we have a motion by Commissioner Cornelius and a second by Commissioner Christie. Uh, Madam Secretary, would you call the role?
Commissioner Carpenter? Commissioner Christie?
Yes.
Commissioner Cornelius?
Hi.
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hargie?
Yes.
Commissionership? Vice Chair Murashi?
Yes.
Chair Rush?
Yes.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioner Carpenter and Commissionership absent.
Okay, um. All right, that concludes the business calendar, moving on to staff comments, are there any staff member comments?
Thank you, Chair, we do have a few comments, uh, first of all, I want to say on behalf of the city staff. Uh, uh, thank you to Commissioner, uh, former Commissioner Mark McLaughlin for his service. On this commission, representing the planning commission, um, so I wanna share that, though. Uh, uh, thank you to his service, secondly, um, Ali will be providing additional information. Uh, as a follow-up to some of, uh, the work that we've been actively pursuing. Uh, the commission's, uh, request for additional work, uh, relating to historic preservation. Uh, you know, working with neighborhoods, uh, as well as looking at the Mills Act program, so. We have a long list of activities that we took to the planning commission. And we're slowly but surely are getting things done, he'll give you an update on what we've been able to accomplish. Uh, in terms of what we're proposing to do with the Mills Act program, um, and he will also be asking for. Um, uh. The meeting date of June, July six, which is during the July fourth weekend. A survey so that we can see if we have, um, uh, the necessary number of commissioners for that meeting, Ali.
Thank you, Min, and good evening, members of the commission, so as Min stated, we're excited to announce that we're launching an endeavor intended to. Uh, elevate the historic preservation program and it is a component that's required by law, it's the Mills Act self-reporting for those who hold Mills Act contracts. So as part of this program, our team will be creating a webpage with one-stop shop information for the community. And hosting informational workshops for the community, including those who hold Mills Act contracts for their properties. And basically, uh, communicating with those owners in batches over the coming years. About how they need to report on the status of their properties, providing photos. And reports of the general sort of upkeep and maintenance that they've been undertaking since entering into a Mills Act. Uh, subject to the approval by this commission and the city council, this is a component that's required by state law for holding a Mills Act. And we're excited to launch this, uh, in phases and batches over the coming years. We will keep the commission and most importantly, the community and the Mills Act holders. Uh, updated with informational letters and mailers and info sessions and all those materials will be posted online. Our goal is to help people remain in compliance with their Mills Acts. And, uh, basically elevate the program by introducing this state-required component, so we providing occasional updates to this commission from time to time. But as always, if you have any questions, you can always email us. And if you have any thoughts on how to reach out to the community or those who hold the Mills Act, we're always willing to hear, uh, your perspectives as well. Uh, secondly, we're excited to announce that on May tenth, we'll be attending the Henninger Park Neighborhood Association meeting. Uh, during this meeting, we'll be providing an overview of what historic preservation means in Santa Ana. Especially for that neighborhood because it is a historically sensitive neighborhood with its own special zoning district. We'll also be providing information on, uh, commonly asked questions like window change outs or ADUs, additions. Things that just tend to come up from time to time for our department and with the residents. And, uh, we'll also have a PowerPoint thereafter that could be distributed in case anyone's unable to make the meeting, they can always refer back to this PowerPoint. Lastly, as Min shared, July fourth is a Tuesday this year and the next regularly scheduled meeting for this commission is Thursday, July sixth. So we'll be asking you through Nuvia via email to confirm your attendance in advance or let us know if you have any vacation plans that week. Um, so that we can determine if we have enough for quorum or if we need to, uh, hold a special meeting. Uh, so with that, again, if you have any questions, you're more than welcome to email us after this meeting, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ali, Andrea?
I do not have any updates.
Okay, all right, commission comments, I'll start to my left, Commissioner Hargie? Commissioner Hardy?
Um, yes, it's been on my mind also, um, referring to, uh, one hundred South Main Street. The United, Historic United Auto Building, um. Wondering if, eh, when it changed hands, um, from Original Mikes to seven oh one club, I'm not sure if that's the correct name of the.
The, for the, of the building didn't change, just the restaurant.
Eh, okay. Um, but anyway, there is a new signage and I thought we did have some sort of, uh, guidelines for that and I'm not sure it meets those guidelines. They also removed a marquee that went through some sort of review process, I believe, at one time to be installed and that's missing. It was not historical, um, so I just think that we need to like. Look into that and what happened and if it actually went through some sort of a process and if the new signage has been improved by our staff. Um, so the other thing is, I'd like to invite everybody to Henninger Park's, um, neighborhood meeting on May tenth. Um, eh, we meet in Henninger Elementary School on, uh, West Walnut at six thirty P M. So, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, and Commissioner Cornelius?
Just those, those event, the meetings you said at Henninger Park, we're gonna email about the dates, you said?
Yes, thank you, we can, uh, email the dates and information to the entire commission.
That's it, Mr.?
All right, and, uh, Commissioner Christie?
I just wanna thank you all and thanks staff for all the work and, uh, uh, having us there, you know, one-on-one or. Two, uh, together to go over the proposed project on, on Broadway, the, uh, Gilmaker Building. That really helped as far as, you know, in advance, uh, because this is major project. And, um, you did answer our questions in advance and so forth, but thank you so much for all the work and, um, thank you, staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Christie, Ed Murashi, Commissioner Chris, uh, Commissioner Murashi, do you have any comments?
I just wanna thank staff for the excellent presentations today, also thank you for setting up the one-on-one meeting so that we could discuss the, uh, the building. The second application today and I wanna congratulate, uh, Commissioner Christie on her award, outstanding and well-deserved, thank you.
Okay, um. And my comments are, I also wish to thank our colleague Mark McLaughlin. For his many years on the historic commission as a liaison from the planning commission, I'm sorry to see him go, he is a. Will be missed, a valuable member of our group and, uh, a, a great voice of preservation. Uh, that will be silenced at least on our dais here, so I'm sorry to see him depart, um. Uh, I would just share with you that, uh, uh, as some of you know, I started doing a walking. A tour of, uh, historic, uh, French Park, uh, some months ago. And I'll be doing, it's the third or fourth tour that I've done or will be doing and that's this coming Saturday from two to five P M. Uh, we'll depart from the corner of, uh, Eighth and French and you can buy tickets online at, uh, preserveorangecounty.org. And so would encourage you to come or tell any of your friends that might have an interest. Um, also, um, I wanted to mention to staff, I was at a meeting recently where. There were, it was kind of a preservation round table around the county and there was a fellow there from the city of Orange. And he shared a booklet that Orange has that is given out to people in their historic districts. And it's a wonderful booklet and I, I thought, you know, um, you know, the old saying that, uh, what is it, um? Um. I'm missing the right word, not copying, but imitation is the, is the best form of flattery, so, uh, why don't we get a copy of that and purloin that? We could put it online, make it a, print it up as a booklet available for our city, change a few words here and there, of course, we'd have to take out city of Orange and. Supplant city of Santa Ana, but it's a very well-done booklet, um, we have such a horrific problem. With people that move into these historically sensitive neighborhoods and, uh, and, you know, are clueless. So this might be a tool to help, uh, the neighborhoods that are designated. Historic like Henninger Park and Floral Park and French Park, but also the neighborhoods that are historically sensitive like Wilshire Square. Washington Square, et cetera, so. I wanted to recommend that, um, and, um. Uh, what else did I wanna say? Well, thank you to staff for your excellent presentations today. Uh, I know you put a lot of work into this, especially given the advanced meetings that we had, which I think was very smart, this was a. Uh, huge project, uh, and I think you avoided, uh, a giant train wreck and a, what would have been a six-hour meeting. And, uh, we would have had to order out for pizza or something, so at least maybe breakfast, but, uh. I'm, I'm glad that that was done because I think that was a great way to flesh out people's concerns and so forth, so. Um, thank you for your, your thoughtfulness in, in doing that, so. I, I hope that in this next budget that is adopted, there will be money to spend on doing some of these surveys that we've talked about. Uh, because we can't move forward with identifying any more historic, historic neighborhoods. Until we have surveys done and it costs money to get surveys done, so I, I hope that that's, that's gonna be part of our. Part of this new budget, uh, process, so, um, are there any other comments to come before us? Okay, with that, we, uh, stand adjourned till our next meeting on the sixth of July, thank you.